We're missing a few people tonight, but we do have enough to start. I'm going to call the meeting to order. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi. Well, I expected a herd here.
Yeah, well, there's still time. So, let's get going.
So, we might as well get started. The first and only item basically on the agenda tonight is 145 King of Prussia Road. Mr. Falcone, would you like to start?
Thank you very much. So, it's good to see everyone again. Dave Falcone with Saul Ewing here on behalf of the Trustees of University of Pennsylvania. I'll just give a quick overview as to why we're here and what you guys have, and then I'll turn it over to my consultants, who I think will be able to walk through the review letters that we've got. But I'll just say, as kind of to start, we are generally optimistic and happy to be back with this plan. We see it as a sign that things are, in our opinion, moving in the right direction with respect to smart and reasonable development at the 145 site. What has kind of transpired since the last time we've seen you is an ordinance has been advertised for adoption by your Board of Commissioners. And that ordinance has allowed the trustees to move forward with a land development plan that would conform to that ordinance as opposed to these existing ordinance. You will note, there are really two plans out there, and they're running in parallel. There's one that goes back several years, and that was the Biomed Plan. That was prior to Penn acquiring the property. There was a plan that came before you all, and it had really 475,000 square feet of office, medical, general, whatever it would be. And that plan received the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The County Planning Commission had gone through caucus at your Board of Commissioners, and a resolution with appropriate conditions was drafted. The trustees acquired the property subsequent but prior to the meeting where the board would vote to approve that plan or deny it, whatever it might be. We put that plan on hold as a result of our discussions with the township and the possibility of an ordinance coming through that we felt better suited the appropriate development of the site. During the next two years, we followed closely, participated in actively, the ordinance that is now before the Board of Commissioners. A few months back, there was a vote to move the ordinance to a hearing, to advertise. We were confident at that point that the hearing would be advertised. Unfortunately, at that meeting, it wasn't. So, following that meeting, we submitted a letter to the township and asked them to bring the Biomed Plan, for lack of a better name, back. That triggered the timeframe pursuant to the MPC, under which the Board of Commissioners has to act. That plan now sits in front of your board for mandatory action, one way or another, early in January of 2017, 2018. At the last Board of Commissioners meeting, when they could authorize a hearing or advertise for a hearing, they did so. When that happened, we reactivated this plan, which was on hold, meaning the PLO amended plan, and that shows 475,000 square feet of mixed development. You've got 250,000 square feet of a mixed medical facility, an ambulatory care facility. You've got 125,000 square feet of general office, and 75,000 square feet of hotel. This plan can only move forward if the Board of Commissioners adopts the ordinance. We understand that. We understand the board knows that. You all know that. But kind of in the interest of time for the trustees, we thought it prudent to at least bring it before you all, get your feedback on it, and then ultimately, we hope, on the 11th of December, your board will adopt the ordinance and allow this plan to move forward. If that's the case, the other plan will then become kind of the secondary plan and be basically on hold or pulled, and this plan will move forward. If it fails, the 475,000-square-foot Biomed Plan will become the plan of record that the trustees will pursue, and this plan will be pulled from your agendas. So, once we submitted that, we've received our review letters from Roger and from Amy. We're prepared tonight to go through those, but I wanted to just give you some kind of an understanding as to why we're here, what plan we're pursuing, and kind of all the things that have transpired since last you saw. So, do you have any questions for me about process or status before we turn it over to our consultants?
I wanted to mention one thing up front before we started, actually, that we are not discussing the mixed-use plan tonight, because that's not before us. What I mean is the ordinance we are not discussing.
Right.
We're discussing the plan that will be based on the mixed-use ordinance if it is passed by the Commissioners next week.
That's right. So, the ordinance has already kind of gone through all of its gyrations. It's gotten the review from you all, from the county. The board has authorized the hearing. There's a document out there. They're either going to vote yea or nay on it. So, that discussion is, for all intents and purposes, over. And under that document, we've submitted a plan, and that's what you all are looking at. I will note that even though the ordinance itself has not been adopted, there are review letters issued by your consultants which contemplate that ordinance being adopted. So, what you see in front of you contemplates the ordinance being in place. Obviously, if it fails, these letters become obsolete, and our plan does as well.
Okay. Any questions at this point from the board? No?
All right. Thank you.
All right, then why don't we start with Roger's letter? We'll let you address that. Let me ask you up front.
Actually, if it's possible, can we make a quick presentation?
Sure. What are we presenting?
Why don't we go through the plan? Let's get through Roger's.
Okay.
Is it possible to get the screens on?
What we wanted to show you was, there have been changes to it, but we'll fast-forward through it for you.
Okay. Let me, maybe we can fast-forward through Roger's letter a little bit here. There's a lot of things in the report here in Roger's letter that are kind of housekeeping type of things.
Absolutely.
On page two, for example, well, that's zoning. There's no major issues there.
No.
Is there?
No.
You're good with all the zoning. You don't need variances on anything.
We will comply with all of those.
Okay. So, page two is all will comply.
Mm-hmm.
Page two over to page three. All nine items, correct?
And the zoning area through nine.
Correct.
Okay. And to, go ahead, into the subdivision and land development. Do you want to go specifically into anything there, or shall I ask my questions?
Feel free to.
Okay.
You're leading the way.
Well, the ultimate, I was concerned about the right-of-way being 80 feet and cartway 48. You are going with the ultimate right-of-way of 80 feet.
And we are. So, it's actually a, I can show you real fast, but we are providing it. What happens is, the 80 feet would require land on the school district side of the property. So, we are giving the 40 on our side, and then the 25 remains on the other. That's why it's 65, because we don't have the right to give the school district property.
Okay.
So, we are complying with that section.
All right. And the other was the width of the, number five of that subdivision land development section there, about the width of the exit and entrance drives being 25 feet. They will be 25 feet at minimum?
And that's, so, we're clear as to what we're talking about. We're actually talking about the SEPTA drive on the very left side of the property.
Right.
That has the property line that bisects it. So, the short answer is, we can comply if that's what the township would prefer us to have. It's added impervious, and it's the way that the property's been functioning today. There is a comment later in the Gilmore letter that talks about parking on that road that obviously you cannot have. So, there is a school of thought, if we made the road wider, we'd introduce more ability to parks. But the bottom line is, we will take the direction from Radnor Township here as to which way you, or the planning commission, how you prefer it.
My personal preferences, and please step in, I think we need 25 feet, because we really held some other people's feet to the fire over the 25 feet, which was a much smaller subdivision than this. What's the feeling of the board?
I agree with you.
Okay.
Okay.
A question on that parking there. While you're at it, I saw parking on both sides. Are you counting any of that parking towards your parking?
No, we are not.
Okay. So, that's all SEPTA parking?
Correct.
Just happens to be on your side of the property line?
Does. There actually is a, like, almost like a right-of-way or an easement that runs along the right side of the property line, or the right side of the driveway entering down. That's exactly 20 feet wide. So, we would widen that to 20 feet. You can see, again, the slopes through there as to what we're dealing with, and, again, trees at the corner. So, really, you're going to hear a global theme from us today about wanting to save as much trees as possible and preserve as much of the slopes and the existing frontages. So, but that falls in line with that. Jim, did you want to add?
I would just add that all over southeast Pennsylvania, and Pennsylvania in general, townships are undertaking road diets to take roads like you're describing in your ordinance and turning them into roads like you have. So, unless there's a safety or capacity reason, I wouldn't necessarily recommend pursuing widening the road.
You're talking about the driveway?
The driveway, yes.
The entrance?
Yes. So, the cost is, you're digging it deeper into a steep slope, and you're hurting the existing vegetation. If there's really a benefit to that in capacity or safety, by all means. But if there isn't, I wouldn't recommend it.
I think I would go with Amy's suggestion on that, but I know from our position that we took on a previous property that was before us, of course, that was more of an issue with, it was the primary entrance to the property.
That was, yeah, that was a different application.
Right.
I mean, I think what he says makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, so, again, so, we would take the direction from the planning commission, and I don't know if you're, I mean, I know it's a comment here that we don't meet code. That's what it says. Whether or not your engineers have an opinion, we'd also, you know, defer to them as well.
All right.
Have a wide on page three under subdivision and land development. Are you asking for waiver on the 500-foot?
Yes, we'd ask for a waiver of that requirement, or sometimes we do, in lieu of, we would provide an aerial that shows all of that area. You know, Roger, I don't know how you feel about that. If I were to create an aerial map of the 500-foot outside the property and then keep our aerial.
That's typically what we've been accepting recently on that. They're not doing extensive off-site improvements. Now, if there are off-site improvements that extend down towards Lancaster, obviously, they'll all be detailed and all, that whole area will be detailed on the engineering drawings. I don't know that it's relevant to have 500 feet going north, I guess, on King of Prussia. There's really no utilities there or anything that they would be impacting.
How is that dealt with? Is it dealt with by the DM, by asking for a waiver at this point, or they're going to leave it to your discretion as to how it's been dealt with?
It has to be a waiver, because the code requires that they do it. So, it must be a waiver.
Right. It's a waiver with us providing an aerial in lieu of.
For the SEPTA driveway, are you proposing any additional usage on that? Do you anticipate any further parking or use of that that would require anything wider at that point?
I zoomed out a little bit, so you can see that we do have a loading area on the south side of that plan, Plan South, and we also, on the upper side, it is one of our access points from the garage and from the hotel and the office building. So, it is a main access point on the, but no actual development on the actual load from SEPTA.
All right. You're saying it is an access, then, to your parking garage?
Not to the garage directly. So, if I can, it's hard to point to the screen now that it's up on the projector, but you can see the entrance on the north side there coming off of the basin.
Right.
Actually, I can use this right here. So, so, this driveway here on the north side of Plan is one of the access points to our property. You can see it works through there. Yeah, but, so, I'm, there. So, the, so, either way, and keep in mind that it's an existing driveway as well, but that is one of our access points. I don't want you to believe that it's a minimal 1 and L. It is one here across from Raider Road, and we have that access there.
Personally, Kathy, I'm more concerned about the turning radius getting in, giving the cars the ability to slow down off the road than I am about the width of the road itself.
Yeah.
But I kind of defer to Amy on traffic for the necessity of it.
I think since it's also an access point to what could be the hotel there, we need a wider entrance, and maybe wider back to that area there, and then let, when it goes further back, it could narrow down to what it is.
Okay. So, 25 feet to the access to our site, and then remain 20 up above?
I think so. We'll ask Amy.
And my only last question on that is, technically, do I need a waiver still for that?
Need a waiver for the light?
Your mic, Amy.
Sorry. I always think I'm loud enough.
The suggestion was, if we ran 25 feet to the access point to the site, and then 20 from that access point north where it still remains, in my opinion, you would still need the waiver for the 25 feet, for that small section that would remain 20.
I think you would. What would be your total cartway width at that point?
25 feet for everything that's proposed.
So, you'd be at 45, so you'd be shy three feet. So, yeah.
No, no, no. We wouldn't, 25 total cartway.
For the entire width of the road? Are you talking driveway or King of Prussia Road?
We're talking about this driveway.
Oh, on there?
You see here.
Yeah, I got you. I'm sorry. I was in a private conversation with Roger and got confused. You're asking if 25 feet would be adequate?
Twenty, today, it's 20 feet. There's a discussion going on, on the planning commission, as to whether or not 20 feet is sufficient, or whether or not it should be 25.
I think you should go with the 25.
Then, the second suggestion was, should you do 25 to the Penn access, or 25 throughout the entire, from King of Prussia Road to the tracks?
Might as well. Yeah, I think. Let me see. Just let me look at the plan real quick.
So, that would act as sort of a bump out north of the driveway, protecting the parking area by the train station. So, the real question is, if that's the design we settle on, would you still need a waiver? Because that short distance is not the width required by the ordinance.
And to that point, that's not really, won't be a driveway access point at that. It would be.
What are your volumes there?
Beyond the driveway?
What do you have coming into that access right there, onto King of Prussia Road?
Well, now, we're talking about back by the SEPTA parking.
I understand. I'm just curious what the access trips are coming in. I mean, it would be helpful to have all the information?
Well, I mean, Jim's looking up that info, but I think if that's your concern, then I think we just make it the 25 feet.
Yeah. I think you're almost there. You might as well.
Just do the 25 feet. We will comply and make that 25 feet.
Okay.
Okay. So, just recapping on page three under subdivision, we talked about a waiver for number one. Number two, the waiver is already being requested for plan size. And we've discussed number five about the 25 feet. So, we will do the 25-foot access way back.
And that is, you're going to do a will comply on number six. I have six on page three.
Yes, there was one radius that we missed on the thing, so. Okay? Everybody okay? Move to page four?
Yep.
You prefer I lead, or you guys?
Yeah, you can go. They were my main questions.
Okay. So, the first seven through 11 are really landscape-oriented, and really, the only one to talk about is number nine, which is about, "Street trees shall be planted along all streets where suitable street trees do not exist." Again, we don't have any public streets within the development, not a resident, it's more of a residential comment. We do have the trees along King of Prussia Road, which we're going to get to as we go through. So, I believe that's a will comply, just based on doesn't exist. You know, no street trees, no deficient streets exist on the property.
We have seven, 11.
So, 211 talks about garbage and trash removal areas. We show in the rear, there is the trash and refuge area for the medical, the mixed-use building. And additionally, in the hotel area here, between the hotel and the office building is, will be an area for refuse right in here. So, both areas will be heavily screened from King of Prussia Road, and we will supplement as needed to buffer from 470s, from the Blue Root as well. That's it for me on that page, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions from the board? John, use your mic, please.
Sorry about that. So, we're down to number 13 then, on sanitary sewer.
Mm-hmm. So, sanitary sewer, if you look on the backside, again, I'm going to point to the plan. We did show sanitary sewer in the back corner, just a lot on the plan, so I think it was just missed, but we had our sanitary sewer connection coming into the building on this side here, which is a loading service court for the entire mixed-use facility. We also showed one coming up here, which is, I think, also noted in the letter. And that is, was really a precautionary in case there's an elevator that needed to drain towards that. It was not intended to have a use in that building.
Well, they're asking about why a sanitary sewer service is in the parking garage. Did you answer that question?
I think so, but I'll try again. The right-hand side is really a shared service area for both buildings.
Okay.
That handles the hotel area also?
The hotel has its own feed off of, off of King of Prussia Road here. Page five. Number three is really just a quick note, sanitary sewer in King of Prussia Road. So, if you see here on the plan, this section of it, the pipe is existing, and our goal was to not have to reopen King of Prussia Road for a sanitary sewer connection. But obviously, it's a will comply. We will have to videotape that to make sure it's in adequate shape to handle it.
The rest of two and four are will complies?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on the sanitary sewer section? No? All right, storm sewer?
Storm sewer is all will comply for us. So, I would skip right to the end, unless you guys have any questions.
That takes us to page five. Item 139 on page six, that's correct.
That is correct. And really, in the general category, same, they're all will complies to us, while we're happy to get into any of them that you'd like to hear any answers on.
I have a question that I should have asked in the beginning. One of these plans or letters, I forget where, I saw 26 acres, plus or minus, mentioned. Plans that were before Delaware County Planning Commission were talking about 18 acres.
Yeah.
What's the difference there?
There is a portion of the property that, let me see if I can find an adequate plan to show it to you. There is a portion of the property, and I apologize, it is a plan in our set, which calls the overall boundary plan. And the overall boundary plan, off to the right side here, is a, an entire area that comes down here almost to the intersection at 30 and back up. That is area that is part of the Blue Root, possible Blue Root expansion. So, that area is over there. It's roughly seven acres. And so, that area shows up. It is part of our property, but when we use all of our metrics on the plans, they relate back to the 19 acres. So...
Okay. Are you using the 26 acres to work your impervious numbers, or are you basing it on the 18-plus acres?
I believe it's all based on the 18 acres. It's all the per code I can pull to that plan.
As I recall, when Biomed was before us, they were using the 26-acre number to get their building in and parking and everything, which we didn't like.
They stopped doing that after we caught on to what the story was.
I thought it came back, though.
Yeah. So, we're using the proposed property line as 18.43.
18, okay, great. Thank you. Questions from the board at this point? Now, we get to our favorite part of it, which is traffic.
Mine, too. All right. So, we go the Gilmore letter dated November 29. So, if we skip to Section 4, Land Development Plan Review.
What page is that?
Two, bottom of page two.
And that's in the Amy letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll do my best here, I believe, to describe this, so please correct me. It is, if you look here across the street at Raider Road, I'm highlighting the green area, you can see there's a grass strip between the sidewalk and the road. And Amy, if I'm correct, that's what you're requesting to add to, no. I got a page caught, so I apologize. We'll go back to number one. Number one is about the waivers that we've already described. So, really, we're going down to number four. Sorry, a page stuck together on me. Going down to number four on page three. So, we had a conversation already in Roger's letter about the half-width of the right-of-way being 65 feet versus 80. This one takes it a little bit farther. It talks about the cartway being deficient as well. So, in what, I think what we've heard, and we'll defer to Jim on this one, but we have a configuration, and really, what we're trying to do with this project is preserve some of the feel of King of Prussia Road with all the trees and landscapes along there. So, if we feel we can make the requirements work within the confines of the cartway, we'd like to do that and preserve the view of those trees and preserve the slope. So, Jim, I guess to describe the lanes configuration.
So, later on in the letter, there's some discussion about the accident history. We have three years of history. The request is to look at five years, but really don't see any capacity reason or accident reason, safety reason, to widen further into the property along King of Prussia Road. We can comply, but I think it's a more nuanced discussion than that, whether it's worth eliminating the steep slopes and the trees that are along there for no gain.
How about turn lanes? Do we have turn lanes?
We have turn lanes, yes. And the turn lanes, you know, we're proposing safe turn lane, so everyone can make the safe maneuvers. We're proposing pedestrian improvements, so the pedestrians have room to maneuver along the roadway. We're signalizing the intersection to make the movements in and out of the site safer. Like, safety is the, is the goal as well as capacity. I don't think any additional widening furthers either of those goals.
Okay. Let's get Amy's and put on this one. Amy?
I understand the complications here with having the steep slopes and the trees. And looking at the volumes that are occurring on the roadway, we're at 1,500 for the peak hour in the morning, and 1,300, so we're beyond the limit of a single lane through the area. The reason that I did want to get the five-year crash information is because we know that three years ago, this area had no activity on the site. So, it would be helpful to have a little bit more historical information on that than what we do presently. So, given that we're sitting at the peak of the volumes for a single lane, I think it would be helpful to have more of that information before we make a final determination on whether or not to eliminate that need.
So, that was sort of my point. We're going to get some more accident history. Nothing we've seen says that there is an issue. We'll provide it. We can comply, if that's ultimately the decision. But the cost is the slopes and the trees. So, we'll comply if that has a benefit.
Well, let's, why don't we start with the history? And then we can discuss, discuss it further, get the background. Is that okay with you, Amy?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
If, also, if you could identify what you think would be impacted by widening the roadway. And I'm not sure where you're going with the sidewalk discussion, whether the planning commission thinks it would be appropriate to just keep the sidewalks on one side of the road, but make for better crossing locations along this way, so that pedestrians can easily act. so that pedestrians can easily access both sides and use the school side. That that might save you a little bit of room, too. So, I would wanna know what the impact would be, which trees would need to come out. And then, let's look at the crash records before we make a firm decision on that.
Understood.
Well, I mean, the trees that are the green trees now are in terrible shape. They're old, they're big, and they're in terrible shape. But they're not on the road. They're not on the slope. They're up the slope. They're on top of the slope. And I think it's aesthetically very important to keep that green. But I don't think those trees, or new trees planted in that location, are gonna be affected by widening. I don't, I just...
So, if we can, I'll show here, this is part of our landscape set. So, this is the tree replacement plan. And this had gone through shade tree and the various groups. And so, you can see there are a good amount that, you know, to be removed that are based on the condition of them.
Yeah.
So, it was cycled through and through the shade tree about that. Additionally, the plan I had up during the discussion was the planting plan for it. So, you can see where the existing pockets of the grayed-out trees there that it would remain. And really, what it comes down to is not your horizontal distance, but it's actually the slopes. So, by the time you push back, you know, another five feet and then grade back, then that's when you start to get into the root system. So, it's also the fact that it is so steep and your ordinance wouldn't allow us to put it back that steep. So, by the time we move back and then correct the slope situation, that's really where it snowballs on you. So, just to consider that.
My concern is that one of the biggest things that the township and the people have been saying is, is the traffic. And the fact that people come off of four-seventy-six and they already have to funnel down into one, the backups and the things that happen there. Keeping one lane is really gonna make a mess, in my opinion. And I'm concerned about how all of a sudden, you're gonna go from one lane and you're gonna have people turning off left and right. And people are gonna be moving so fast, they're gonna have nowhere to go. They're not gonna be able to pull over left if someone's turning left. It's going to be all of a sudden, everybody coming to a standstill. And then, people are gonna be crossing because nobody's gonna wanna put sidewalks on their side. So, this is gonna be a standstill in the morning. So, personally, I feel that there needs to be sidewalks on both sides, and we need two lanes of traffic. Otherwise, I think it's a great plan. I just feel like that's not, absolutely not addressing the concern with traffic.
Okay. Well, I think what we do is we take, we get the accident data and we come back with that additional. You segued, Amy segued as well, is also in the sidewalks. So, number five is basically about those sidewalks. So, if you look at the property from a global picture here, there are various sidewalks on the, the school district side of the property has sidewalks throughout this, this entire frontage. It can't draw very straight. And then, we also have a, based on a conversation, we have a sidewalk trail that comes in off of the right side of the property and actually comes through the beginning, the middle of our property and provides an access point from that place all the way to the SEPTA area. And again, that area would be ADA compliant, basically, to the SEPTA, which is another one of the comments in Amy's letter.
Have you ever driven down King of Prussia Road and watched people run for their life from the SEPTA station to the sidewalk? Just about every time I drive past there, I see one grab someone clutching their belongings and sprinting as people come flying around the corner. It's too dangerous.
I've driven down there plenty of times, but where is anyone?
Right there.
Right here?
Right there, running for their lives.
So, one of the, one of the other changes we're proposing is to have crosswalks at our main entrance with the signalized intersection, with pedestrian crossings. I'm hoping that's a safer, I know that's a safer condition for pedestrians to cross. Now, if pedestrians choose to cross other places, you'll have the same condition you have today. But that, providing a path to the signalized intersection has some logic if the concern is crossing the King of Prussia Road.
The fact that it's signalized alone will provide additional time for pedestrians to that area as well.
And also, a reason where, if you're stopping traffic, you'll need an opportunity for some queuing to happen while people are crossing and stopped.
And that is a comment in the letter.
Absolutely.
That, I don't know if we're at that comment yet. But that is a comment where, that we will comply with, is that one of the conversations revolves around...
So, as to your point, though, I'll note, a lot of those folks that you see running for their lives are, in fact, our employees. So, when we relocate our facility over here, in all seriousness, that's going to protect those folks and keep them on our property. But many of those folks, we know, come out. So, we're hoping through the signalized intersection, as well as relocating our facility to being near the SEPTA facility, that it's going to help with that type of traffic. We do believe we're gonna get a lot of our traffic here off of that line. So, we're thinking of our folks, too, yeah. So...
You may see the badges dangling when they're running.
So, if I can try to stay on the comment letter, if we can make it through that. We've been talking about five now here on page three, which basically talks about sidewalk along the entire frontage and the adequate sidewalk trail. So, what we're really talking about is that this intersection today, or in the proposed, will be signalized. And what we will do, is one of the comments later, is provide a ramp over to the Raider Road side of the road with a crosswalk as part of the signal. So, we will provide a crosswalk along that side. Our preference, again, based on the slopes and based on the trees, would be to maintain that the other side of the road has a sidewalk. And whether or not you need it on both sides, when, if we're talking about pedestrians who would be coming from this section of the site back here, we have them addressed by taking the sidewalk through the property. We have, if you're coming across Raider Road, you'd be able to cross safely at the intersection and come up through the property and get to the SEPTA facility through our property. Or if you're coming up Raider Road, you could, again, walk down and, you know, continue, continue north, actually, or left on that plan. So, we believe that it's an adequate sidewalk system by addressing the safety at the intersection, at a signalized intersection at that location. So...
I'll note one other thing as well. As part of the township's trail grant, the trail was located only on the side of the property where you see the green line, where the existing sidewalk is. So, the school district side, when the township was acquiring easements from all the property owners, they did not acquire an easement from the trustees for the one-forty-five site. They acquired an easement from us for our existing facility because the proposed trail is just going to run on that side of the property. So, what we're doing here is providing an opportunity to connect what is going to be the proposed Radnor Trail to our site at an intersection. So, that's also going into part of our design with our sidewalk is to mirror that trail system.
So, again, just circling back, the comment goes on to say some potential improvements to the sidewalk on the school side, either widening the whole sidewalk or widening in spots every two-hundred feet to allow for adequate ADA crossing points. To provide for handicap-accessible crossing at the signalized intersection. We'll time the signal for the crossing. We feel like that's a better idea. That said, we can comply. Like, if you want to widen on our side and have sidewalks on both sides of the road, that's something we can do. I think this is a better scheme.
Does the SEPTA bus stop anywhere on King of Prussia Road? Or does it go back into your property?
At the intersection with the SEPTA train, I think, yeah.
But if it's going in the other direction, does it stop anywhere on King of Prussia Road?
I'm not sure.
Does anybody know?
It stops in front of two-fifty.
Okay, but not in this area? Maybe you can come on up and answer that on the microphone.
Lloyd Goodman from Radnor Racket. How are you pointing on this thing? Right there, there's a SEPTA station.
Right, on the Penn side of the property, right?
Even when it's going towards Lancaster Avenue, I believe it still stops.
It stops on the south side as well?
And while we're talking about that, can I make another comment about the sidewalk?
Sure, yeah.
Could you scroll down there? So, I see how you have it covered nicely, your sidewalks to get to the R-one-hundred, you know, at the end of the SEPTA driveway there. But I think you should have this sidewalk between your property going towards mine because a lot of people are gonna use the Paoli Local, which is on that same side.
Right.
So, you're kinda asking them to cross King of Prussia Road at the traffic light, walk all the way to the Paoli Local, and then cross back over.
Right. Or they would maneuver through the site and come back, but I understand.
But look at that, that's very circuitous. Now, maybe from this side, they might, but, you know, here, I mean, from the left side of your site, the hotel, they probably would go to the SEPTA road, and there's a sidewalk on my side of the SEPTA driveway. You know, they would use that. But from over here, it seems like coming off the medical building, that doesn't seem too good.
Okay.
Amy, I think maybe you can give us some direction on this about sidewalks on one side or both sides going towards Goodman's property. You don't need to do it this evening, but...
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. One of the things that I did after you brought up the trail and the discussion that, if you could show me through your drawing exactly where the trail is cutting down to get to King of Prussia, is it going to be anywhere near that southern driveway?
No.
Where is the trail intended to cross, King of Prussia Road, that you're aware of?
Right here at the main driveway.
Okay. So, the trail is intended to cut through your property in that circuitous manner?
Yes.
And it's always been intended to be constructed that way, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one on the other side.
Okay.
The tracks are trails on the north side of King of Prussia Road at all.
At all? I thought it was coming through...
It's coming down thirty, crossing over King of Prussia Road onto the school district property, and then, running up King of Prussia Road on the school district property towards the existing Penn. So, they took no easements on our side.
Gotcha. I thought there was some intention of coming through that tunnel area.
Now, there might be some people who would use the Paoli Local. As Mr. Goodman said, do they have to cross to stay on some sort of sidewalk, cross over to the school district side, walk down that side, and then cross back again?
Or work, or walk through our property, which would be a longer route, but as Mr. Goodman pointed out.
See, I think the pedestrian issue is, there's two sides to it. So, the main entrance, I don't see a lot of pedestrian traffic on the right side of the main entrance, on your side of King of Prussia Road. But on the other, on the left side of the main entrance, it seems totally ridiculous not to have a sidewalk there, to me. It's, I think you're gonna have a lot of foot traffic. You're gonna have people on the grass. You're gonna have people not knowing whether they can walk there or not. To me, walking toward the Lancaster Avenue is fine, not to have a sidewalk. But walking toward the mass transit is, I just think the more access you have, the better.
So, from, I guess I'll use, is there a pointer? I just wanna point how it does. Yeah, so, where this, so you're talking...
If you go to the main entrance, Dave, and you go left, to me, you need a sidewalk there.
So, I guess, yeah, I mean, so, but that's our main crossing point. So, we're bringing all of our traffic down the site to here. That's where our signalized intersection is going to be and the crosswalk to connect to the township trail. So, once we move up this way, eventually, you're gonna have to bring those folks back across the road.
And what I'm saying is that any transit-oriented design would never, ever not put a sidewalk on that stretch.
But I guess...
Because it's where people are gonna walk, they're gonna walk there.
Where would it go?
It's just a sidewalk that goes all the way to... Yeah.
How about the, is the connection through there to the Paoli Local? Or do you have to go under a bridge somewhere?
Up top, you're talking about down here, Kathy, as you go up towards the SEPTA station?
Not the SEPTA, but the other train, the M-Track train.
You mean the Paoli...
Yeah, the Paoli, yeah.
The one-hundred's back here, right? The R-five or the, whatever it is. So, that's up here as you come towards the bridge.
Is there an easy walkway to get there, a sidewalk, besides going back and forth across the street?
So, I don't know how long, do you know, Mike, whether or not the sidewalk continues? I guess, Lloyd, you know, is it on...
Yeah, it's on the other side.
It does. I just looked.
When you go to the left of the SEPTA station, I have a sidewalk and it continues all the way to the Paoli Thorne, I guess, official. And that's why I think, I totally agree, you need one from the SEPTA drive to the main entrance.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yeah. But that is off their property?
No.
If you go to the left of the SEPTA driveway there, that's off the property?
Yes, but there is a sidewalk connection that continues.
Okay.
Even though it doesn't appear on the drawing.
So, what we can do is, well, I think what we'll, during the resubmission, we'll zoom out here on that aerial that I'm gonna provide for the off-site survey. We can really look at the pedestrian access. If the sidewalk's desired between the main entrance and that, then that, I think that's the answer. I think when it compounds it with the potential widening in the sidewalk. So, let's look at the traffic data, see what the widening does, see if that gives us, leaves us any room to do the sidewalk through that area.
Yeah, knowing how people walk, they take the shortest distance.
Absolutely.
So, whether it's grass or sidewalk or climbing a hill. So, since they're gonna make that path anyway, we might as well make it a safe path, even if it's a little windy along the front edge of the property.
We can just make it really steep, right? Make it really, I'm just kidding, sorry.
Put a little escalator in there.
Okay. So, I think we moved off of that sheet there. We were on sheet three, number five is where we were hanging out. We go to page four, there are, talks about, number ten, we talk about a sidewalk, a grass strip on the other side. We can work to include that into the submission. And again, general comment B-one talks about the width of the trail, sidewalk connection. So, again, I think we just talked about that one for a while as well. So, I think if you guys are okay, we'll move on to page five.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, page five, we're gonna skip all the way down to eleven and twelve. So, I guess, and Jim, I'm gonna defer to you again on this one. But really, on number eleven, we're talking about, again, the main intersection. Well, number eleven, we're talking about the main intersection.
So, number eleven, it contemplates two exiting lanes. We can comply. You know, our analysis shows an acceptable level of service for the exiting traffic and all movements at this intersection. Again, it's the cost. Is it worth it to have the two separate lanes versus what that does to increase impervious and remove some of the existing trees, which would likely result? We can comply, but I think that's a more nuanced discussion than that. So, this is number eleven on page five of ten.
Amy, do you have any thoughts?
I'm looking at the traffic counts at that intersection, and your PMP car exits are at two-hundred-and-fifty-three trips. Forty-one opposed. Did you look at any kind of split phasing on that and maybe a dual left for the exits? Just, I'm thinking what we can gain by having that second exit lane. I don't know if that, the problem is you're not gonna have the receiving lane for that unless you widen.
No, we didn't contemplate dual lefts, I think. Frankly, we contemplate a single lane because the single lane seems adequate to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
I'm just, I'm looking at the volumes right now. Where were your level of services at that intersection? Do you remember?
We had a D at the peak exiting time for the exiting movement.
That's not good. D?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
For the entire intersection or just for this approach?
For that approach.
What about on the opposite side? What'd you have going on there? Do you recall?
I don't recall, but I brought the study, so... Yeah, so the overall intersection of King of Prussia Road, the driveway, and Raider Road is a level of service C in the PMP hour, which is when the exiting movements are heaviest. I guess...
I'm not sure where I'm...
So if you have the study, I'm looking at page 35, which is the table, but...
I'm in table nine, 2020 build condition summary table.
Yeah, I'm on 2020 build conditions with improvements summary table, which is table 12.
I got to keep going then.
Yep.
Do most of the people go towards Lancaster Avenue?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Go ahead.
I guess my point for this discussion, we can comply. As you can see, Amy and I have a lot more conversations to have about the traffic study and the improvements. I don't think it's necessary for the two left turn lanes. I don't think we should have that discussion necessarily right now.
I agree with you. We're not at that point yet.
Okay.
But...
We'll discuss it outside of here.
We can comply. Don't think it's a good idea, but if it's okay with the planning commission, we'll have that discussion, understanding the concerns.
Okay.
So Amy, I'm sorry, and I apologize for being late, everybody. You're talking about, you wanted a second egress for the, their onsite lane, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So one question I have, which is just kind of an underlying question for all of this, and I don't know that, we don't have the traffic study that you have, Amy. It sounds like you got a big report and digested it.
You should have had that, and it's in your packet.
The recent one?
No.
That was emailed to you. We didn't get it.
No. But here's the question, here's that kind of the high-level question that I was going to ask.
Okay.
To some extent, this, the traffic studies, all the traffic studies are based on the calculations that are being done, assuming mixed use, mixed medical use and the hotel and all those things. And so it's not ultimately going to be our, I mean, the ordinance change is either going to go through or it's not. And so it will either be presented with this plan or not. But I guess my sense is, do you think that the same, do you have a sense of the traffic numbers if this was just straight office building to, and maybe the traffic study has it in there as a point of comparison, to have an understanding of how this differs from the straight-up by right plan that could also be presented?
I don't have it open.
No, I didn't, I'm not, I don't know that you have it open.
I don't have it memorized and I don't recall offhand.
Wouldn't expect it, but that's, I guess that that's kind of where ultimately this stuff comes from. Whatever the numbers are, it's more relevant in the context of how does it compare to the straight-up 475 by right plan. And I don't mean for you to answer that tonight. I'm just saying, that's the lens.
They are probably prepared to have that answer because we have had discussions about this several times.
Yeah, so that's more of a high level, not the nitty-gritty of what we will comply.
Actually, what we were going to do is review what we have before me, before us tonight, based on the assumption that it passes. If it doesn't, then we go back to square one and look at the other way.
Okay. Makes sense.
Okay, so number 12 talks about, again, eliminating...
Go to the one that shows the... Did you bring that one?
There, she has the right turn lane.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to locate you, we're on the far side closest to Lancaster Avenue of the property, so the first entrance you'd come up to.
So the comment references eliminate the separate right turn lane into this driveway, which is essentially a loading driveway for the site. The volume does not necessitate a right turn lane. And, you know, we show it here striped as a right turn lane. That's not necessary, right? What we are proposing, though, is widening more from here down towards the, to the Route 30 intersection, because there's dual lefts now with a very short period for the dual lefts to merge into one lane, right? So we're widening from there up to here to allow for 500 feet for cars to merge into one lane. And this widening, while it can function as a right turn lane for the few deliveries that are there, will really function as more room for people to merge back to one lane. And it'll make the dual lefts, and we're actually proposing having dual threes, give more room for them to merge back into a single lane. So the striping for the right turn lane should probably go away. The widening should not, and it should be there so that the cars have a chance to merge back together.
And I would agree with that, and that's something that we were interested in seeing, and I'm glad to see that you're showing that extension. And I'm thinking we could have those double arrows showing a merge after that driveway. So that gives motorists a minimum of 500 to 600 feet. To use that as a two-lane, that was my reasoning, is that when you make that turn onto that road...
That's the intent. So there's an existing right turn arrow there that is inappropriate, if that's really the intent.
Right.
So we wouldn't, it looks like we're proposing a right turn lane. That's not really...
So what that would provide you with is the ability to get those motorists off Lancaster Avenue and keep those left-turning vehicles to be getting in the leftmost lane and allowing for 50-50% distribution between the two lanes, because they're aware that they're going to be able to merge over once they get over and are in a free-flow condition.
It'll make the whole signal work better at Lancaster and King of Prussia.
I have to ask you a quick question. All weekend long, I looked, I could not find the legend that said what those marks meant. What is that? Is that the delineation between different zoning districts? They're all around, it looks like railroad tracks around the property. Is that what that was? I couldn't find it on the legend.
Yes. Yes, it's the difference between the PLO and the PLU.
As far as the left turn lane, you know, the pavement will be there, whether we stripe it for a left-hand turn or not. The only turns into the site from the left will be deliveries. This is the service entrance. I think you should keep it, just because those rare left turns can pull out of the through movement and the through traffic can keep going, especially since the pavement's not going to be there. If we, I mean, it is going to be there. If we eliminated it, we would just put the gore striping, striping in, and it would function that way anyway. You might as well paint it the way it's going to function.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
If you have to meet the county, the Delaware County Planning Department's request to provide another bus stop, how are the cars in one lane going to get around the bus?
I haven't contemplated that.
Okay.
Well, I mean...
If it's at our driveway, the bus would stop in the right turn lane, and the right-turning cars would have to stop, and the through movements would continue.
Much as the way it would function, the current bus stop functions at the northern entrance. You know, the buses will stop a short period of time, cars will have to wait behind you.
Yeah, I will tell you, in the 80s and 90s, the sort of design criteria was to have pull-offs for the buses. And the experience in the 20 years since then is that the buses don't pull over, and you're just making pedestrians cross pavement to get to the bus. So in general, what Mike described, where the bus stops in the through lane, is what happens anyway. The goal now is more get the pedestrians to the bus where it's going to be, rather than create this...
Really, the bus driver doesn't want to pull back into traffic. Once the bus driver pulls over, he can't get back in.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we're not thinking through and providing for a long-term plan, that we're meeting the short-term goals and we're not thinking through what that street's going to need. I mean, it already is bumper-to-bumper in the morning. Do you guys live in the township?
Don't live in the township.
I live in two different...
Okay, so I mean, it's bumper-to-bumper every school morning, and now you're going to add all these cars in it and a bus stop, and people crossing at your location and a stoplight, and it's not going to move. It's going to be deadlock.
Just understanding, so the bus is there today. The bus that would stop would arguably be the same bus that would be, would be stopping at the other side of the property. So that bus is already maneuvering through the road. We understand your concerns. I think that what we'd like to do is address, you know, have Jim and Amy discuss the traffic data with the accidents and the warrants, and see what really is necessary along this facade. I think, I think what you hear is saying is that we're willing to look at it all and do whatever needs to be done. But I think there are good options that we can do that would leave the configuration the way they are. And again, so the bus is being one, that second bus stop would also need to be approved by Septa, which is a whole nother thing that we would go through as to where it would be and everything else. So just looking at the global picture, I think that what we really need to do is have Amy and Jim sit down, talk through that, and see what's warranted along the road, come back to you guys with that idea.
Great. Just one, real quickly, regarding your comment about the bumper-to-bumper, you know, we've studied pretty carefully what the traffic is, what it could be, and have proposed some meaningful improvements that we think will help. That was really the whole point of the traffic study. So like, for example, the widening we just discussed will make the dual lefts more effective, will allow us to provide dual through movement onto King of Prussia Road. So the signalized intersection at Raider Road will allow all the vehicles that use it, on the school side and on our side, to use it more effectively. Like, that's sort of the...
I'm not saying those aren't good improvements. I'm saying that we have an opportunity to provide for the future.
Sure. Understood.
And I think that we should consider that more thoroughly prior to making a decision.
Okay.
When you're thinking about the bus stop, are you contemplating that most of the people getting on and off the bus would be Penn folk? I mean, I, you know, it seems intuitive to me that that stop, that new stop is going to be serving the facility. Why don't you just run the bus into the facility and run it back out? Really, seriously, you have a lot of land there. You have a lot of cartway.
Yeah, I think that, to that point, the existing bus stop is just as functional as adding a second one for Penn employees. Running it through the property brings up a whole nother cloud of issues running a bus through a private property. But I understood, and we can talk about that some other time, but I think the...
Well, the other reason I brought it up was that you're going to have to have shuttles on your property anyway, eventually, because once King of Prussia Rail goes through, there's going to be a lot more people coming to King of Prussia Road on mass transit. Trust me. And so, and I think you should have a shuttle anyway.
Amy, and I guess to both of you, how many, in this configuration, how many cars can be queued in the north and southbound left-hand lanes at the Raider Road intersection? My reason for asking is that if you did the traffic counts, I would think you'll find that there's quite a few in the AM peak trying to get into the high school. And, you know, if that, the way the striping is, if the left-hand queue into Raider Road could be longer to accommodate even more cars waiting to enter Raider Road, that might help with some of the traffic congestion. If you could just take a look at that, you know, the traffic counts that, as you dive into this more...
Absolutely.
If extending the length of that left-hand turn lane...
I think that was one of our comments, is that they needed to compare the queue that's out there with, and anticipate it against what those lanes are and how they compare so that they can be extended if they need to be.
Yeah, that's...
I think that's what you're saying.
Exactly. Exactly.
We'll take that under advisement.
Okay, thank you.
That's, so in terms of the letter, I think the page six really talks a lot about truck turning movements on and off the property. We have some cleanup to do on there, some recommendations about 45-foot radiuses that we agree with and we will take care of. So really, it pushes us to the traffic impact assessment on page seven. And I turn it over to Jim for good. And ask you guys to have any other questions.
Any questions? We'll bring them back.
No problem.
He's not going far.
Yeah.
That's fine. That's fine. So we're up to the section that begins transportation impact assessment, TIS review. Are we all there? Page seven of 10. So we just discussed discussing with Septa. Of course, we're happy to discuss with Septa how we do with that. 2A regarding the traffic counts, there were some early dismissal days. My understanding is the early dismissals weren't for the high school, but they were for the grade schools. But we'll look into it and make sure we have adequate data and work it out with Amy to make sure that it is. We've collected a lot of data at this site over the years. I'm sure we have, we have the data. Crash data, we've already talked about. We'll get, well, first, crash data B1, we'll submit it separately. We will, B2, we will provide the five years of data. We've provided three and have seen nothing too concerning. Number three talks about the transit ridership, which we were just discussing. We were using the assumption of 7% transit ridership for the site. The comment is to assume zero for the traffic considerations. We're happy to do that. I think we'd like to continue that discussion. I don't think it changes any of our analysis, really, but in reality, I think if you have an office component, which we do, there will be some transit ridership, and it's appropriate to consider. That said, we can comply, and I think...
We'd like you to comply.
No problem.
Back to zero. Thank you.
So that's three. Provide a signal warrant analysis. We can do that. That's number four. Number five has to do with the township ordinance requiring level of service C or better on all intersections within the study area. It's frankly not a realistic expectation, I think, in the study area. It's way beyond what PennDOT requires. As I mentioned earlier, we provided improvements that improve things from F to E or to D. So we provide a lot of improvements. We're complying with what PennDOT requires in a traffic study. This level of service C is really not achievable. You know, the comment goes on to say, if it were a five-lane roadway, would that achieve it? Maybe it would. Everything we've heard is that no one wants a five-lane highway for King of Prussia Road. And we think our improvements are meaningful, and we get everything up to be moving well during the peak hours. Taking the big picture step back, that's the whole point of this exercise with the mixed medical use, that the peak hours will be better, right? You add to that the improvements that we're proposing along the roadway, the new signal, the new signal timings, the widening to make the existing signals better. We think we get there. The level of service C, unachievable. So we're asking for a waiver from that particular ordinance.
Let's discuss that in the board. Any thoughts from the board? Pardon me? Okay. What you want to, my thoughts are, yes, we could widen this road in this area to four or five lanes. However, you have to get under that tunnel down further. And this morning was a prime example of a truck getting stuck in there and taking its top off. So while that tunnel remains there, I don't see how you can expect, or even, I don't know if it would even be good to put in a four- or five-lane highway in this area and expect it to go down to barely one lane in each direction at the bridge. What's the thoughts on the rest of the board?
Well, we're not just servicing Matson Ford Road. I mean, we are servicing all of the businesses that are opening up.
the businesses that are opening up between here and the tunnel. And the concern is that by the time you give a longer turn lane on the left side for Raider Road and the time you give a long right-hand blending area or for the double left-hand turn lane off, you're almost there. And my concern is that at some point in time, that tunnel may be addressed. So we should be prepared for it. I don't say it needs to be a five-lane highway, but I think we should be a little more prepared than we are.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with widening it as it comes onto the road there because you are going to have several peel-offs into the PennMed property and the school and then going down further. So I agree with you to a certain extent that, yes, maybe we should have that space there so that we can expand over or make the lanes wide as you turn off of Lancaster Avenue in here for stacking and things like that. But I think we need to give them some direction if that's indeed what we want.
So the, the specific comment is to do with the ordinance to achieve a level of Service C. I don't know that a five-lane section would achieve Level of Service C. I don't know that. We didn't look at it. We're asking for a waiver from that particular requirement because we think it would be onerous. And if a five-lane section doesn't work, you're looking at a six-lane section. Like, where do you stop?
Well, also, I think all the traffic is not going just to your site. It's going to other sites and you have the control over this.
Absolutely. So what we propose easily mitigates our traffic and makes the conditions better in general.
I, I think one of the concerns I have about, you know, the notion of continuing to widen this is where would the widening even come from? I mean, you're butting up against the school district property where there's a trail proposed by the township. The township's been in communication with the school district about putting in a trail on the school district side and the, it, it's not a done deal, but there's, you know, already conversation about what impact that would have on the, the trees that are on the school district's property. There's, there's a rather steep slope that, just the way that the high school property is on, on the west side, there's a pretty steep drop-off to the fields. And so, and I, my recollection of the east side of the property is that it goes steep, it goes up pretty quickly.
Yeah, it does.
So at this point, you're providing effectively, what, three to three and a half lanes?
We provide turn lanes where it's appropriate to do so.
Right, but then it's still-
And we drop them when it's not.
Right, so it's still ultimately a two-lane, three-lane?
It's one-through lane in each direction-
Right.
With the two lanes.
Okay.
With the exception of what we were just talking about, where the turn lanes come on to King of Prussia Road.
Right, where it's wider.
Those two lanes there, eventually merge back to one.
Right.
And the capacity analysis shows that that works. Like, that works.
Well, my point is that I'm, listen to your, I'm not even sure at this point where the land would come from. It's pretty constrained on the school district side.
They'd have to, we talked about it when you came in, they would have to take some out of their slew.
Okay. All right. Oh, I can't hear you on the mic, but, I mean, that, that would be, you know, that would be one concern I have. And I guess the other piece of that would be to say, what does that even do to the intersection at Raider Road to have it be a four or five-lane road there in terms of, you know, crossing?
So, I mean, that particular intersection, we achieve a Level of Service C in the PM, right, with the improvements we're proposing. But the, the ordinance says Level of Service C throughout during the peak periods, AM and PM. And that just ends up being more improvements that we haven't contemplated and isn't necessary. That's really the point. So we're, we're asking for a waiver from that specific requirement. Any specific improvement, like, we've been talking this whole time about, yeah, the northern driveway should be a little wider. Okay, any specific improvement, happy to talk about. But this blanket requirement of Level of Service C throughout-
It doesn't, that's not exactly what the ordinance says. It just says the, it just says that those areas that show levels below Level C, you should give us a specific recommendation of the ways to eliminate the problem. And then they proceed to list all the recommended, you know, improvements that could do that. It doesn't actually say that you're required to get it there.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's worded a little differently in the actual SADO, but I hear what you're saying.
And actually, one, one thing to consider would be incentivizing your workforce in some way to use mass transit. Because the SERA Center does that. I mean, the people that work in the SERA Center are actually subsidized by their employers and SEPTA. And they've really, it's really made a big difference there. And I just think that we need to remember how close you guys are to some really pretty good mass transit. And it's like, a lot of people would die for the kind of situation you're in moving forward in the next 20 years. I'm sure you're going to be there for 20 years. And it just seems to me that this is something, you know, to look at. Like, you know, if we're studying traffic counts, why don't we study alternative ways to get to work?
That's a great thought for comment six, which is next.
So I just want to step back for a second and kind of give some thought as to how we arrived with the plan that you have in front of you with respect to traffic improvements. So what we've done to this point is, we really worked off of the conditions that were part of that biomed plan, that 475,000 square foot of office. Because based on the analysis we did, we basically say that's going to bring you potentially the most traffic you could have. And it went through the whole process and they came up with a whole litany of conditions that were attached to a resolution to approve that. And that's really kind of what we represent in a lot of ways on this plan, as well as comments from the commissioners where they said specifically, we don't want the widening out here on King of Prussia Road. We just don't want it. We don't think there's a value to it. So we followed some direction. So we're not really trying to be difficult, but there was a method to why this plan is the way it is. We were really trying to follow very specifically the, the previous truck that came down the road. No, no kind of pun intended there. But we wanted to make sure, we didn't go too far outside of the lines because we wanted to keep the process moving along. So that's why you have what you have.
Go ahead.
I intend to ask for a waiver on that. Number six, though, to your, to your earlier point, yes, we will comply with, with providing what Penn Medicine will do to, to incentivize transit use. So we're on to B, general TIA comments. So, so number one. Number one talks about the notion of taking credit for the existing biomed site. And I think taking credit is probably not the right term. So I, I want to, I want to dig into this one a little bit. What our, what our traffic study does is model the existing conditions today with nothing on the biomed site, the counts we have, the actual data. We have what generally on a traffic study, you look what the no-build situation would be. What would happen at some date in the future with a no-build. So our no-build analysis in 2020 contemplates a 427,000 square foot occupied office. Because if Penn Medicine decided we're not doing this project anymore, that site is a 427,000-foot office and would be occupied in 2020. So we have that analysis. And then we have the, the 2020 build analysis, which is that site goes away and the 475,000 square foot plan is what we contemplate there. So we don't, I, I don't think it's a, a fair notion that we take credit for it. We do say what it would look like today, what it would look like in the future if Penn Medicine didn't build what they want to build, and what it could look like in the future if Penn Medicine does build what they want to build. So that's, that's sort of the process we went through. We did not contemplate what it would look like if there were a 427,000 square foot office and Penn Medicine built 475,000 square feet next to it. That was not on the table. So to that extent, did we take credit for it? And I don't think that's the right term.
Now, are you referring to that traffic study that we haven't received yet? Where you compare those three?
I'm referring to the traffic study we submitted with these land development plans to the township that this review letter is responding to.
Okay.
So I don't, I didn't distribute it to plenty.
I don't believe, yeah. I don't believe we've seen the, the traffic report you're referring to there. So hopefully we'll have that by the next meeting. Am I correct on that?
I believe the traffic report was on the thumb drives that you received.
We didn't get a thumb drive.
Probably the issue, then.
Yeah. Okay, we'll look at that the next time.
I brought one copy. You're all welcome to it.
That's all right.
Any questions on that?
Since we haven't seen it, I'd say no.
Fair enough. All the rest are really like what kind of table format we want, some, some data presented a little differently.
Are you referring again to that traffic study and all these?
Yes. This is the traffic study review.
I, I realize that, but I mean, the thumb drive that we didn't get, are you specifically referring to numbers in their way of presenting? Because at this point, you know, since we haven't seen it, then-
So I think, Kathy, maybe what we should do then for this section-
Skip that part for now.
Because you guys haven't seen it, is skip it. Because I don't think there's a whole lot of value in us talking about it where you guys are kind of-
Clueless.
Think, well, I wouldn't say clueless, but just uninformed at this moment. But, so why don't we skip that section until you all have the information and we'll, we'll hit it the next time we're here.
That sounds like a better plan.
All right, good.
I didn't mean to infer that what you're doing is not important. I'm sorry. We all think it's important when we're sitting there.
That's the end of the last letter, then. So that's, regardless, the rest of the comments on that letter are pretty simple procedural presentation issues.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board at this point on this?
I have a weird question that maybe there's not an answer to it, but, or maybe I've missed it. But when Wyeth was up and running, when they were fully functioning, does anyone know how many employees they had or how many people worked in that facility? And do you guys have any idea how many people roughly might be working once your plan is fully done? The only reason I'm asking is just for that perspective. Because I, I saw somewhere in the, a business journal that Wyeth had, they transferred 2,000 people from their Radnor facility. It's hard to believe 2,000 people worked there, but maybe, maybe they did. So I'm, I'm just thinking about traffic down the road, like, are, are those numbers comparable?
Yeah, so we, we don't know what was there at Wyeth. But we discussed, should we try to find that out or not? And, and we decided that was kind of besides the point because Wyeth ain't coming back, right? This is 427,000 feet of office, which is very well-understood, using, you know, a lot of available data and felt that was the appropriate thing to, to examine. But no, to answer your question, no, we don't know.
The reason that it came to, to my cranium was I looked at some old data on, on intersection counts-
That I think PennDOT did, Amy. And the numbers, when Wyeth was up and running, the numbers were enormous.
Yeah.
Like on King of Prussia Road, the traffic counts were, I thought they were like, whoa. You know, it surprised me that they were that high. And so then it occurred to me, well, should, should we think about what was then? And the road hasn't changed, you know, so-
Yeah, I, I don't have that information. I'd be interested in seeing it. What, turning movement counts or just the ADTs traffic? The ADTs.
Different spots on King of Prussia Road that they measured. But I, I can find it and I, I don't, I don't know if it's worth anything or not. I just-
Well, I, I just did an analysis. Commissioner Booker asked me to give the, him the historical ADT stuff that was in DVRPC. And I was able to get it for, not this road, because this isn't a state road. I could only get it for King of Prussia Road over on, not, on Radnor Chester Road and King of Prussia Road north of the SEPTA bridge. And I didn't see a whole lot of fluctuation in the volumes historically since 1999, the data that I had. Yeah, I think there was one that was really out of step with all the rest accounts. So I had maybe 10 different years of analysis, not necessarily numerically in order. And I believe that like in 2012, there was a huge spike. But then the trend actually, if you omitted that 2012, everything else looked pretty much with a slight increase in growth. But I can go back in there to see what information is available on just this section of road.
So my only last comment about the, the TIA is that those dates on page seven, the traffic counts from 2015, November 24th was Thanksgiving that year. Just saying. So I, maybe that's the wrong date in here that was even used. And the 18th, there might have been a half day, you know, the Friday before Thanksgiving. But, you know, for sure, making sure that we have some good up-to-date numbers for traffic counts in, from the school district would, would be helpful. And I really do think that you're going to have to look at extending that left-hand lane into Raider Road. The, the number of, of people who, one of the things that's changed over the last few years, I mean, Wyeth is what it is, but the phenomenon of how many parents drive their kids to school and how many people, how many people drive to the high school is, is changed even in the last couple of years. It just keeps going up and up and up. So, you know, we don't have the numbers in front of us, but when you're working with Amy, to just make sure you have some really accurate numbers there for, for the school district. Because I, I think that's significant. But it caught my eye that the 24th in 15 was Thanksgiving. Not a great traffic count day. But thank you.
Neither is the day before for exactly the opposite reason.
Correct. Yeah, that, that whole week is pretty much shot. You can pick a good week in, in October.
I'll look into that.
October's a good week. Thanks.
All right. Any questions, comments from the board? Okay. Is there anything you wanted to point out in here that we haven't covered in tonight's presentation or discussion?
No, I think that, I think that should do it.
Okay.
So I guess we'll look to see you guys in a month.
Well, let's wait and, let's see if there's any public comment first. Okay. Is anybody here in the audience who would like to make a comment on this? No? Okay. Then-
So assuming the vote goes the way it's going to go on the 11th, right? So if they approve the ordinance, we'll be back with this plan to your next regularly scheduled meeting. If it does not get approved, then we will not see you again on this plan and we will move forward with the, the by right biomed plan.
Okay, great.
Does that sound reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
All righty. Thanks very much. Have a good holiday, everyone.
All right, moving along on our agenda. Old business. First, I would like to thank Sue for her, I guess this is your eighth year?
Last meeting.
Time flies when you're having fun.
It is, it has been a real, this has been a real joy for me. Not everybody says that looking at plans and SADO ordinance, this is a real joy, but it has been a real joy for me.
Well, we certainly value your present, your involvement and your attention to detail and it'll be greatly missed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Because you were on before-
No one wanted me making fudge today with the cold that I've got. It, it will arrive, though. Don't worry.
Okay, any new business? Your mic?
The nominee committee would like to make a motion that we reelect Kathy as the chairperson and continue to have Skip as the vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other people would, should we, how am I putting this the right way? Are there any other nominations? If not, is there a vote?
All in favors of the, of the-
Continuation of the-
Of adopting the nomination committee's recommendations, say aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, well, thank you very much. And I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.